They didn't have their lights on. And the pulse wheel, old guy.
Yeah, well, it's not because I wish I could get off early by something like, there's a yellow. Blue, yellow. A dog is yellow. I'm blue.
Well, this, this is just a draft. No, this was just. This one, here's the, yeah. Oh, yeah. And this is sort of the fellow. That's what I was planning to watch it out. And then that little scroll down. Yeah. It's so I can have that some for two of the birds and wilds. I have some of them shut out for a little bit. Just.
Well, no, that is the dog.
That's the one that I guess he can. Okay. I'll let you.
Okay.
I don't know. Right. Okay. That's cool. Yeah, I should notice the mismatch today because I was like, wait a second. I can't. Did you get one? I took a picture. Oh, okay. Thank you. Yes. I'm walking.
Anyone who knows, they can come in.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll go down there. Maybe. Oh, you're not.
Hey, Jerry. We're ready to go.
There's one completely helpful. And I plugged into the show. The budget ain't going to be.
Well, they got a copy. Okay.
So just one, let it go in low tech. We'll be in low tech. Let them know what they are. Well, he, he doesn't get us on that. I agree, yeah. Who did raise? Hi.
Okay, we'll call a meeting to order. This is a meeting, Bellevista City Council Work Session, November 18, 2024. Our first item is review of the minutes from October 28, 2024. Is there any comments on that? Okay. Next item is unfinished business and ordinance amending various sections of the Code of Ordinances City Bellevista to provide for renaming the Department of Community Development Services to the Department of Planning and Development, providing for reorganization, declaring an emergency, and for other purposes. This is on second meeting. Taylor, did you want to give us a few words on this?
Yep, just to summarize, I know we talked a lot about it last month, but renaming it to something that's a little bit more modern and more applicable to what we do. We don't have a community development division within community development services. So we're really just planning a development office, and so we would like to name it as such, and that's a little bit more in line with what other cities are kind of doing in the southwest or the quadrant, the four state area. The second portion would be a slight reorganization. Right now, the building division is split into two, part of it being under me and part of it being under fire. However, the Arkansas Fire Code, the residential section says that at least the chief of building official is the one that is to assign deputies, such as the planning technicians and the plans reviewers. So this reorg is to be more aligned with the state fire code. Thus, the reading established proposing emergency clause, that way our local ordinance is more in tune with the state ordinance. After those two things, I think that's really the main gist of this proposal for you guys tonight, so happy to take any questions.
No, I just have a question for our, and this is about a departmental thing. Does GEC review, does that fall under planning or under?
That's me. That's development, so that's planning and development.
And just because, talk about now, because I can ask about it during the budget. So we have a part-time engineer right now, right?
Correct.
Now, are we going to have another, like a full-time? Are we going to make a full-time?
I have a full-time engineer technician that is within the engineering division. So I have a part-time PE and then a full-time engineer tech. She has a master's degree in engineering.
So you have two people who are reviewing GECs.
Yeah, one and a half, yeah.
So that was Fred, and you know, this is recent hire.
Yeah.
Who's that was?
I'm glad to write up about GECs because we were behind six months and had 250 when Doug Taff left. And right now, we have about 27. So that's one of the many improvements.
So the 200 and something have been.
Yeah, we have 27 left, which we consider two weeks.
Yeah, because that's why I was asking, because I got a call, I talked yesterday to a person, and it took me through the process. The guy wasn't like upset, he wasn't being, you know, irate or anything like that. He just kind of took me through what he's been facing and others. And I know some builders, I guess, have a conference or roundtable with the engineer and another person to try to find out what was going on. So I just knew it was taking some time. So it's nice to hear that that's been buttoned up.
Yeah, so a few of us have bumbled down, so you might have got it delivered, so.
Yeah, because, you know, I think it was Jerry last meeting said, ask about the building permits, why it was taking so long, the building permits. I think maybe that was getting confused with the GEC.
Well, I think that was getting confused with the septic system review, because that process is several months, through the septic DRs and the state, but that's outside of city perjury. That all happens before they come to us at the city. I heard they were two to three months back there, just with how much development's happening here on septic systems. But I think even they are starting to catch up, and it's starting to get a lot less as well on the state side.
But I made this conversation yesterday, it was specific about a GEC, what happened over the septic.
Yeah, GECs are being heard about mostly all year.
What changed, or the process changed between Mr. Taff and Taylor to get it from 200 to like 27, or what made that?
Well, Taylor could probably explain better than me, but we did hire that engineering tech, who's fairly new. And some other people helped.
Yeah, so basically, there was just one person reviewing it, which is traditionally one person was reviewing it. We had a huge influx. We used to only get like 30 a month, and then out of nowhere, we were getting 80 a month, then 90 a month, then 100 a month.
That's so much.
Yeah, and so just one person reviewing that obviously cannot keep that up with the same amount of review time of two weeks. And so five of us had to step up and just work at it for several weeks.
Just get managed more, yeah?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, so you guys, I guess you don't issue building permit until the GEC permit's issued, right?
Correct.
Oh, gosh, what was I going to ask about? Anyway, okay, well, it's good to hear that that number's been taken down.
Well, on the subject of building permits.
Well, that's what I was going to ask.
Have to have you chime in on this, but I just heard today at a meeting that we have more single-family building permits than any city in Northwest Arkansas. But I didn't know what the time period is. Is that for this year or?
I didn't see that report that you mentioned, but I believe that report was given off the year of 2023. So they, at this annual conference they do, they talk about the year prior.
Yeah.
Like for cabinet or just period?
No, period. More than Springville, more than Bentonville, more than Fayetteville, more than Rogers, single-family homes.
So that was always, we used to get a report that was forwarded to us, but I haven't seen one this year. What, what is our number now on building permits for 2024?
Uh, I can pull that up and give you exactly.
Because I saw, you know, in the, in the septic proposal, it references like 627 homes, but I don't know if that's this year, or, you know, is that, is that some homes from last year combined with this year?
So the GECs, it's important to separate, when I give GEC stats versus residential stats, the GECs come first, sometimes a couple months before, sometimes even six months before the residential building permit. So we may have 600 GECs for this year, but there may only be 400 or 500 residentials because sometimes it takes them six months after they clear the lot to get all the data they need to submit a residential building permit.
Exactly, but we've been 500 plus for like the last three years, and I guess we're probably going to at least do that this year.
We're above, yeah, we're, last month, I gave a report to the mayor, I believe we're at a 53% increase compared to last year on residential and.
Okay.
GEC permits. So we will definitely beat last year's numbers.
Okay.
Well, I'm not, I'm not going to vote for the ordinance. And the reason I'm not going to vote for it is because I think the ordinance is actually in fact, it's already been done, and basically all we're doing, it just substantially, I think the conversation that we're having now should have happened before, we should have been, should have been privy to the, the, what was happening prior to the, at this point. So that's just my opinion.
Okay. Yes, Larry?
I have an alternate proposal for you. There's copies for you, there's copies for the chair. No, those are there, those are there. There's five here, five, one, two, three. Oh, there is one page. Yeah, oh, two pages.
I'm just.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Would it be appropriate for this new board to join us at the place?
No.
I mean, she's not. Not, not to answer, not to ask questions, but this, or the mayor would have, but what's happening.
I think she can hear pretty well from where she is in this.
If I may ask, I'm a technical.
This is not on city council. That one's a way. I think it was, I think she'll be on city council.
Thank you.
At the latest, where it's going around.
I, I should define it there.
So do you need to, that to refer to?
No. Well, we had, I've been talking with Chief Sims, he said that everything's under the fire protection code, so I went to, went to staff, and they pointed me to a website, and that's the printed page, where it says volume one on the front, volume two and three on the back. And in those codes, it's very explicit that volume one, even though it's the Arkansas Fire Prevention Code as an umbrella, volume one is really the fire. That has to do with everything about fire protections within buildings, sprinkler systems, materials, insulation, things like that. You turn over to the other side, volume two is also under the umbrella of the Fire Protection Code, Fire Prevention Code, but it's really the International Building Code for buildings, commercial buildings. So it covers everything that's not covered on the building for fire protection, which is volume one. Fire protection is fire protection products, materials, things like this. The volume two has to do with the building structure itself, how you do the building. And then volume three is the International Residential Code, which is again, under the umbrella of the Fire Prevention Code in Arkansas, as the big umbrella, but it really is the residential code. So it's called the IRC 2021. The volume two is the IBC, or International Building Code. And both of those are, yes, under the Arkansas Fire Protection Code. But the reality is, is that, you will note that for volume two and volume three, they do permit a local building department with a chief, chief building official. And that's who manages all of the stuff. We currently have a chief building official, and that's Fred Hublison. He's been with us for a while now. He's our chief building official, certified, and he's responsible for all of the activities. He now works under Chief Sims, because we moved the inspection group over, and he was part of the inspection group. That takes me then to the next document, the next handout. One is the department plan that we received last meeting. Says department organization 10 to October 29. Organizational chart, I'm thinking that, that maybe this is a little bit stretching for, for a planning director. Granted, she's a talented lady, but there's a lot of things going on here, and it's not going to allow her time to do her job if you make her a department manager. So I'm suggesting that we don't do that. For the fire department, there's a proposal to move the permitting division from CDS over to, under the fire chief. And I have a proposal, if you flip the thing over, it's a sketchy drawing, but it has the same stuff on it in the same order. So on the left side is the planning department. Suggestion would be is to maintain the planning department pretty much like it is. Where Taylor would be the planning department director, the staff that are shown on the other side would remain, and they would actually, there was a request for a compliance development review. My suggestion is, is that the staff themselves take on that function as an expansion of their role, and to do field work, or field inspections, field final verifications, acceptance inspections with the city engineer, and the project people from the owner's side as the, and I'm assuming that's what the compliance, compliance review person is supposed to do. And then.
So let me, you saying, don't hire the, the DCL, the compliance officer, and have the staff do that instead?
Have the staff perform that function.
In their spare time, I guess.
Well, I don't know. I, I, I haven't seen a lot of stuff on the, on the planning schedules lately, at least a lot of stuff. And I, and I, having served in that similar position in Centerton, it was the planner's staff's responsibility to follow that project with destruction and acceptance. So we were there, project problems in the field, we were there when they did the final acceptance inspection, see if they conform with all of the things that they were approved and required to do. And so, yeah, there's some, some time, but it's a, it's a learning and growing experience for the staff, but it provides them involvement throughout the whole thing. Now, that's not to say that maybe you don't have a person in that support team. I don't know that. I don't know what the workload is. And maybe the workload is stretched out, maybe it's not, maybe it's time-consuming and shortcuts may be made, I don't know, I have no idea.
Well, one difference between our city and others, particularly places like Centerton, is they'll have big developments on flat land. Right, so every house in the whole development's virtually the same thing.
But this has to do with houses.
When we're doing five, 600, well, that has to do with how busy planning is. When you're doing five or 600 and permitting and building inspectors, when you're doing five or 600 houses, and they're all different.
But the permitting is.
They're all custom.
But, but mayor, the permitting is going over to the fire department is what the proposal is. So the permitting is not going to be in the planning department.
Yeah.
Permitting is going over to fire.
Yeah.
So I'm doing inspections.
I need to direct everyone to the ordinance, okay? The ordinance adopts changes to various sections of the code. And when you look at.
I have pretty many proposals for that.
Well, but this is what's on the agenda. There's no, there's no organizational structure on the agenda. But what it does do, it, it, three pages, two pages are just changing the name of the department. That's, that's, it does nothing basically other than that. Then you've got, at the very beginning, some places where CDS was doing something, and now it's going to be the mayor or the mayor's designate. So what I have to say to you is that what this does more than anything is allows the mayor to structure the government according to the way the mayor, the mayor wants to do, or the mayor's, whomever he designates to do a very particular job. It doesn't adopt a wholesale structural ordinance, nor does it particularly say, this goes from you to the fire department. It just says the mayor will determine. So I just want to make sure everybody's seeing what is actually on the agenda, because I, I've heard a lot of it as well, that we're going to move to the fire department. It's not what it says.
I guess we don't know what the proposal really is.
Well, no, the, the changes would be to give the mayor the authority to determine who does what. That, that's the, so I mean, versus what we're doing now, that's the, but I just want to make sure you understand what's on.
Okay. And I didn't go into the draft to revise any of that. The concept is what I'm submitting to the council to consider, the mayor or the staff. And it puts, and the engineering side of it would be under technical services, the trails being there, the engineering part being there. So if they would coordinate any engineering consultants, not planning consultants, engineering consultants. So they would coordinate projects, construction. Fire department as an example, the construction is going on there, they would be involved with that to a degree, so.
Question here. So if I understand you correctly, or what you're, what you're saying is that the council has no part in the organization or structure of the city?
I'm not saying that at all. I'm saying that this proposal doesn't.
The proposal.
It's not necessarily adopting an organizational structure, nor is it particularly, it, to the extent that it's making a change, it's saying instead of CDS, it'll be the mayor or the mayor's designate.
Correct.
So that's, and, and yes, the city council can, by ordinance, adopt an organizational structure of the city. The city council can do that.
Correct.
So this is just like simple mental thing that you're getting, which I propose, like, hey?
This is, this is from Larry. This is not.
Oh, no, no, that, that's one.
Oh, that, yeah, well, that was, that, I think what the mayor is saying, I, is like, this is what my plan is.
This is what your vision is, how you want to move forward, but like, if you have like a suggestion, you have the ability, if we do this, you have the ability to make that your suggestion, your choice.
Or, or anything other than that?
Yes, because that's, as this is CEO of the city.
Yeah, it's not, it's not cart because of what the attorney, Jason, has spoken, and all of it's loose-ended, but this was a concept that was thrown out.
And so that's what the, and just finish, I think I just said this, but the mayor's staff has put a proposal to say, well, we may, if the change is approved, this is how it would be the mayor would want to organize it.
I, I think what's happened is decisions were made on personnel, departmental changes and personnel, and then asking us to come back and approve it in arrears. And I don't think we really got ahead of it, you know, presented it to council first. And we, you kind of talked about that, mayor, you know, some, it's like, well, if you're asking to approve something you've already made a decision on, you're, you're the mayor, and I've said it several times, you know, you're the CEO, and, and I understand that, right? I mean, that's, that's been presented to us several times by J C in the past, you know, what the city council role is. But I, I think kind of some of the issue is, is some of this should have been talked about prior to, the change is actually being made because they're done, and now you want us to approve it. So it's not comfortable doing it that way, but that's kind of where we are right now. The only thing I would ask, you know, if this was approved, because, you know, there's, there's pretty big changes here, it feels like, right? Is that there was, there was a, an evaluation of this, you know, something like six months into the burn, an honest evaluation of, is it working like we need it to? And if it is, fine, if it's not, let's say it isn't, and let's take steps to fix it. That's, that's, that's what I would ask at this point, right?
Okay, that reasonable?
Yeah.
That was my, that was my point a long ago, is that we're.
Yeah.
And I see this organizational layout that's, that's proposed here, 10 to October 29, is really taking our planning person, our key planning person, and making, making them a department manager, and a department manager of something that doesn't, doesn't have a lot of time to perform functional work, because sometime in there, yes, but with the breakdown that's shown here, a lot of that time is going to be in department management, staff reviews, staff administration, a lot of time will go into that, which will be tracked from the primary benefit of that individual's talent, and that is the planning functions of the city. We got some big stuff that's still ahead of us that we're not over the hill on.
Neil, I, I don't disagree with you. It looks like a full plate in management without performing a function, right?
Yeah.
Don't know. We haven't done it yet, right? Or we're headed that way. So we're going to find out, I guess. I don't know that I, like, right now, that I would vote it, vote it down, because we've already moved in that direction, decisions have been made, because that can really muck things up, you know?
Too much, but. Yeah. But maybe a realignment of some staff that's been hired.
Staff is quite anxious about it, and frankly, a little agitated after what happened last month. And I, because of some of the questions you raised, I talked to the building inspectors who haven't been under fire for over a year, and asked them how they liked it, and they said, yeah, this was fine, they liked it. And I talked to the permit people about it, and they're dying to switch it under fire. They can't wait. I mean, they're crazy about it.
Yeah, but that's all going good. I'm just saying, you kind of put the cart before the horse in a way.
Yeah.
You know, it wasn't presented first, this is what you're thinking, this is what you're going to do, you, you pull the trigger on it, and then you come back to ask us to approve it in arrears. It would have been more comfortable if it was the other way around.
Yeah.
No, but, now, I'm, I've done some checking with some of the area folks, and, and there's a concept out there called community risk reduction. And that's, that's the reorganization plan that's being proposed in Bellevista by moving permitting and inspections into the fire, into the, into the fire department. However, when I talk to some of the area department folks, it looks like it's a retirement set up for, a, an employment set up for retired, fired employees who don't want to do anything else, but would want to stay involved at a remote level with the fire department. One of the local fire departments, their entire staff doing inspections, permitting, and all of that is. and all of that is retired fire folks. A fire guy goes in at twenty-two years old, retires in twenty years, so he's forty-two years old. Now he gets, I think he qualifies in locke for retirement at that point, does he not?
I don't think the age of the particular employee is relevant, that should be part of the discussion.
Whether it's forty-two or forty-eight or whatever, it's long before sixty-five or whatever.
It has no bearing.
Typically. And so they're looking for other employment because medical insurance for families is very expensive if you go out on market individual. It's very expensive. So they want to go to an employer. So in one case, all of the employees in doing the permitting and the inspections are retired fire folks. So. They're not old, but they're retired.
So what's wrong with that?
Well, I don't know that there's anything wrong with that.
I mean, it looks like, it looks like they would be.
Because they have to be certified to do the inspections for, if they're doing electrical inspection.
Well, that was, that's not what we're doing.
I just, we're not talking about hiring different people to do this. These are people that already work for us.
Right. No, we're not looking at changing the people. I'm saying it's going to evolve to that likely, only because of what I see in some of the neighboring departments and how they work.
There's no way to predict that.
There's no way to predict that. I'm, I'm not being critical. I'm saying that that's a likely probability.
I don't know.
Because of how it's organized. And so my, my whole point being is that I think we need to make sure that we have a chief building official under the fire chief that's directly, authoritatively in charge of the inspections and the permitting. I mean, that's my point.
Yeah, so that is.
That's what, that's what we have.
It's a structured way. I don't know if it is or not because it, it, it looks like the permitting, it looks like the permitting is being moved under the fire chief. And if you turn the thing over and look at it, the permitting section is going to the fire chief and the building inspection division goes to the fire chief. And my point being is that the chief building official is in charge of both of those.
And the fire chief is the chief building official?
Well, he's not. He's the chief fire official. It doesn't say anywhere in the codes that I could find.
Seize or either or.
It's, it doesn't say. I couldn't find anywhere where it says either or.
But this is not what we're going on.
Apologizing.
I don't know what to do.
But I read through.
That, that is for information.
Pumping pages of volume one, volume two, volume three. We spent lots of hours looking at that code that was out there.
Well, one of the things that I would like to say is, I've been here, not, well, it's going to go on six years pretty soon. It's an evolution. The city has been growing very rapidly and will probably continue to change who reports to whom and the structure as we grow and become a different city. You know, we don't know where, what it's going to look like in ten years.
And then the question is, why do we need to become a different city? I know we have changing.
I'm, I'm not going to talk about that because I'm just saying, we are certainly different than we were when Cooper Communities built Belvista, right? It's, it's a continual evolution.
We weren't here when Cooper built Belvista.
Yeah. I'm just saying, our, our employee base is going to have to continue to evolve to meet the needs of the city and the citizens.
But where do you see us changing to meet those needs? Where, where is it? We have trails. We picked up trails. So we have two people in the organizational structure for trails. And that's adding one under the new program, even higher.
It's our same current staff.
Yeah. So, I know, but some other people talked to Chief Sims as well. I mean, I stopped in and we had a conversation. And Chief, you know, in our conversation, if I recall, this, we're kind of going, like, going to a structure that existed before we became a city, correct? And I guess it was Frank decided to, to organize like this or?
It was, it was under Frank's administration when they moved, made the building revision. That's correct.
Right.
And it was under Chris Simpson.
Yeah.
We didn't have the people. I, I mean, I can answer this. We, it wasn't long we started to have to, start inspecting houses and, and do that part. The ACC was doing that. We adopted building codes and started doing that. I think we had a CDS department. I can't remember the timing of that at first. And so, you know, it just, anything that we did developed as a necessity at that time to do with the employees we had that had the skills that they had at that time. And so, you know, why did we do what we did at the beginning? A lot of times we didn't have much other choice.
Right. Gotcha. So anyway.
And at one point in time, the fire department was up, we were all volumes, volume one, two, and three.
And, and my, my recollection of Chief Sims is that building inspectors for electrical, plumbing, otherwise were under the ACC's office.
And we're either ACC or the building county inspection division.
If it was in the county. If it wasn't, if it wasn't POA line, it was in the county.
I vote the city back in those days.
And so how, how the fire department interacted with that, I don't have any intimate knowledge or understanding, but I, I do know that the ACC issued the building permits, did all the inspections through the permits, and approved octoencies. I don't know, I don't know how the fire department was connected with that. Other than commercial buildings, you obviously were connected because that relates to volume one.
And depending on what, depending on what they're inspecting, we also had him put on volume two and three as well, back then.
So I, I respectfully differ with you in terms of the authority because that clearly says chief building inspector, chief building official.
And that's correct. We have a chief building official here, yes. Right, I noticed.
And so.
As you mentioned before. Under your authority. Under my authority.
Well, but it doesn't, doesn't say that in the code. So. Doesn't say it in the code that it's under the fire department. The umbrella is under the fire protection code. It's a three-volume set. You got one, you got two, and you got three. But volume two and volume three both distinctly refer to chief building official. They don't say chief fire official. They say.
The chief building official answers to the fire chief. All practicality, that makes the fire chief chief building official. By default.
So bottom line here, we either vote for this ordinance or we don't vote for it.
It's always the choice.
Okay. And if we don't vote for it, then.
Then you're where you are and you do something else or don't do anything.
Okay. From Larry's organization, which I already, I'm sorry, it seems to make a lot of practical sense. Taylor, I don't know about Taylor's management abilities. I don't know anything bad about Taylor's management abilities, nor do I know anything good about her name. I don't, I don't know. But it certainly would appear like you're overloading her here.
Well, actually, we're taking things away from that. We already took building inspectors and code enforcement away from the CDS. And now we're taking permitting away from CDS. So actually, I think we're making it for focus on planning and, and development, which is her strong suit and her subordinate's strong suits. So I agree she has a challenging job, especially here at first, but she's up to the challenge. Most of the changes I was making, I was trying to find talented managers to manage things. And that's why things are under police that didn't used to be under police. And things are under fire that didn't, didn't used to be under fire and things are under Taylor. I'm just looking for talented managers and I know the people who are working for me. I can tell who's who.
I, I agree with you. I think that what, what's in the fire department, that's where it should be. I think it's great, as well as the police department. I think code enforcement being there is excellent, excellent move. I, that's again, that's just my opinion, looking at, at she is being, she is being the chief planner, putting her at administrative duties on all of these others is, is overloaded. But now, again, that's, I guess that's your choice to make, but that's just opinion.
Well, unless you wish to propose a change in the ordinance that's drafted. Because the ordinance right now leaves it pretty open-ended.
You all don't have to do everything about a topic at one time. So what you can, you, you can, if you don't like, if, if, wherever this ordinance does that you don't like, vote against it. And then if it doesn't pass, then, you know, we'll draft something that you want and then we'll have a vote and see whether it passes, you know? But we kind of, we need to avoid the, well, okay, now we're talking about organization. It's all, and then stuff we hadn't thought about and throwing in. I, I think we need to key on what is in the agenda and what the ordinance says or doesn't say. And then move on, you know, you enact it or look at something else in the future.
Taylor?
Just to bring us back to the ordinance like Jason's talking about. There's only two or three areas where it's reassigning permits to the mayor or his designate of the city, which is all of chapter 103 currently. Currently, chapter 103 is our building supplemental code in our ordinance. And that is very vague. It says the city, that is currently open to the mayor and his designation as reads currently right now. There are some few stragglers that regards to permits that we are proposing to match that. And I say few, I mean, like literally three. The rest of this is just renaming all of 107 and 109 to planning and development because 109 is our zoning code, so that's planning. 107 is ours, development code, which is obviously development. So it's just renaming those areas. So I will still hold the permits that I've been reviewing since I've been here in 2020. Nothing's changing that. Just the permits that should go to fire to be clean with the rest of chapter 103 as designated by the mayor, such as pods or temporary storage units. That is what's being proposed here, just a cleanup. That's the cleanup part. It's just to match the rest of the ordinance. So if this ordinance doesn't, if, you know, if you guys end up not wanting to pass this, then we may be looking at changing all of chapter 103, which would be an entirely different thing as well as the other chapters of code. We'd be looking at rewriting several chapters of our development ordinance. This is just cleaning up what's already there and then renaming us to be more specific as to what we are and to modernize it a bit.
I have a question. I'll try to make my. Have you looked, have you looked at this, Larry's organization chart?
This is the first thing.
No, I haven't seen it.
Okay. Okay. I just wanted to hear an opinion on it, but again.
Yeah, well, it belongs. New business ordinance C, bending section 103 dash 189 additional requirements, permitting in the code of ordinance of the city of Belvista to require septic permits prior to installation, repair, or replacement of any part of a septic system not related to new construction and for other purposes.
Yes, thank you. I have a question. I brought this up previously and one of the big objections to it was primarily from the septic installation companies, B and B and I can't remember the other one. But that was a big concern for us, the, the, getting the permit. So is this going to be a permit that they can obtain online without having to actually come to?
Taylor, I think Taylor got some feedback from some, some of these dollars.
I heard from them who you're mentioning, they were supportive, but yeah, they reiterated that. Just wanted to make sure that the permit would be easy and online. But all of our permits currently are online, so this will just be another one that is online and almost, we call them over the counter permits. Our subpermits are pretty quick. They don't have to go through a formal plan review process or anything like that.
I'd like to compliment you on the good job that you did with this.
Thank you.
What, my, my one question would be, and I think I would propose that we do that. It talks about a fee of $25 for residential and 50 for commercial. Is it okay to make it 25 for both?
You guys, you guys have the authority to change our fee schedule. So if you wanted to change.
And it's in, it's in the draft here. Just, I thought it was in the draft.
Yeah, that's current.
It set the, it set the initial fee schedule for, for the permits for doing this. And I thought would be, I don't know that a commercial is, is going to be any more work than a residential would be. And so I thought would be, is it, make them both the same?
Those are, that's our current fee schedule. So if you wanted to change.
Oh, the 25 and 50?
Mm-hmm. Yep. So it would just, if you guys approved this on Monday, then it would just automatically fall under the fee schedule you've already approved, which would be 25 residential, 50 commercial.
And so those fees that are out there now are installation of a new septic system?
This is a plumbing subpermit.
Oh, just a plumbing permit?
Yeah, just a subcontractor permit or something.
Okay. All right. Okay. I will throw in that comment.
I, I just like to my compliments in writing it up. I think what really solidifies everything, there's like a document out there about the overarching conversation of septic system in Belvista that a gentleman wrote. He's very close to septic and thing. I can't recall his name right now, but it's, it's really good. It really opens my eyes. But the statistics that you put behind it, the write-up that you did, I mean, I don't know how anyone could read this and go, wow, we really need to understand our situation in Belvista and where we are. So out of 627 single-family residential buildings, applications we received in 2024, only 73 of them have sewer for sanitation. That's only 12% of the single-family development. The other 554 are on their own individual septic system, right? And, and I don't know how many of these homes, probably none of them have a secondary location if their original field fails, that they can run additional lines, right? Or they got to go into POA property, or they had to do a sci-fi system that's incredibly expensive, right? So I, I commend you and I think this is, it's a no-brainer for me. And it's not expensive to, to obtain the permit either, right? And right now, what's being installed, you hope and pray they're being installed correctly, right? But you don't know for sure. So, yeah, nice job.
So, so if there's an abandon, if, if they hook up the sewer and there's an abandonment of the septic system, would that require the permit then?
That requires a permit.
It already does?
Or requires a plumbing permit.
Okay. All right. So that's already independent from this?
Yep.
Want to move on? Number D is an ordinance amended section 12 dash 1, providing potable water to locations with failing septic systems of the code ordinances of the city of Belvista to provide further circumstances constituting septic failure, declaring an emergency, and for other purposes.
This is what I brought to you guys during your work session last month and just based off the conversation I brought forward, what I thought, what I captured from your comments. Just expanding the definition so I can capture more instances that are more aligned with the state health department and get the septic concerns and public health concerns fixed quicker.
So. So do we have system, are you aware of a system that would fall into this particular ordinance at the moment?
At the moment, no. Actually, I just closed out my last failure a couple of weeks ago. But I've ran into some within the last year that were not covered in the current ordinance. And so I would like to capture those.
Yeah. So, you know, that attorney, he took a screw, the original kind of writing and how they landed on the surface water, right? That's the most identifiable. But then you have a couple of backing up into the home. I guess the backing up into the home, how, how would, how would that be reported to you? You know what I mean? I mean, if that happens, how would you be notified?
A tenant that leases the place would say, would say, the tub won't drain and the toilets won't flush, and they would notify us. And that's how, more than likely, how we're going to find out.
I mean, I'm aware of a home and it backed up in a home. I don't want to tell you what the circumstance is, but if, but even if it backs up, it could just simply be because it's overloaded by over occupancy. I'll put it that way. And once that occupancy goes away and you have the proper number of people living there, it kind of clears it up, right? It can. I mean, it doesn't mean it's failing. It just means it's too much water at one time.
The field is overloaded and it can't absorb it as fast as it's.
Right. But once, once it filters through and it evaporates, it can kind of fix itself.
So one of the things that was, one of my concerns, which has been addressed, was to basically say, and they have to comply with the health department and to reference the health department. We did not do that. And so instead of it just saying, when it flows on the ground, it adds two additional things that make, would make it failing for purposes of ordinance. Discharges into dwelling unit, which is what you were just talking about, and discharges into local surface or groundwater. So when we talk about groundwater, we're talking about water in the ditch.
No, groundwater, we're talking about the car's topography. So like, typically, there's water. You'll see this, like, if you're on a hillside, like Montagnan Creek, do you see it coming down below the house, like out? see it coming down below the house, like out of the ground instead of down on the surface? That's what I'm trying to capture, where it's coming straight out of the ground instead of rolling down the surface. Typically on hillsides near creeks, which is exactly what we want to avoid, to capture those as well.
You know, it's really interesting, you know, you did those two sessions for residents to come and learn how to properly manage, you know, their septic system. And, you know, the, the first one was really well attended, the second one, not quite as much, but I don't know, sometimes it's just getting it out there. But one of the young ladies that worked, I don't know if she worked for the health department or whatever, but showing a situation, what you're talking about, where you have a home up high, and then you, it's kind of like on a bluff, it's not necessarily a bluff, but then you have the, the, the stones, I'm going to call it. And just shortly after, she had shown that example, because you know that water that's coming up out of those lines, you know, it only goes so deep, but it was raining, I was going home, and I just looked over, and I could see the water running out of the cracks of those bluffs, and you know there's a septic system right there, going right down into the creek below it, which flows right into Little Sugar Creek and Sugar Creek, it just keeps going downstream, and I was like going, man, and we have a lot of that here. And honestly, I'll just say, the, the focus that's being put on septic systems in Velvista right now, I'm, I'm glad to see it happening, it needs to happen really badly, so I'm, I'm happy to see this percolate into the top so the, so the community at large can kind of get more engaged in this conversation, because it's, it's really troubling, you know, not just today, but certainly into the future, and we could really find ourselves in a bind, you know, so, again, I, you know, applaud your efforts, so, yeah.
Okay, we ready to move on? E is an ordinance enacting a new section 2 dash 202, deputy city clerk of the code of ordinances city Velvista to allow the city clerk to appoint a deputy and for other purposes. You want to talk about this, or Wanda, do you want to?
I was asked to create some legal structure where Wanda could appoint a deputy to sit in on a meeting and take the minutes, or if she were to happen to not be able to be present or certify a document, if you weren't there, under her direction. And so there's really no legal structure in place to do that in our city code, and so I created one, that's what this ordinance does. It's very short, I'll read it to you. It basically creates a new section of the code that says as follows, the city clerk may appoint one deputy city clerk to perform such official duties as may be determined by the city clerk. No appointment of a deputy city clerk shall be for a period longer than the elected term of the city clerk making the appointment. The deputy city clerk must be an employee of the city legally eligible to serve. So what this would allow is, I don't know, it's like Cassie, for example, were to be here, and, and Wanda could designate Cassie as deputy city clerk for any period of time she wanted, or for the rest of her term, or however, but you only have one at a time, and they have to be an employee of the city, because we don't want Wanda going rogue, and, and going out there and appointing 50 or 60 deputy city clerks that aren't city employees showing up, wanting to go through the file cabinets.
That's my question, is this one person?
One person at a time.
No, at a time.
At a time.
So it could be Cassie, it could be Brenda, Cassie couldn't do.
She can, so we can, we'll create a little document that said I appoint Cassie to have to be deputy city attorney until the close of business on December 31, or, or whatever day.
So she could appoint him for a year at a time?
She can be, no longer than the rest of her term. That's what the, what the ordinance will allow. That may not be what she intends to do, because it is going to be up to her whether to do it.
What would they have access to?
I think she wants to say so, and so she's going to.
Could I add a little background first? The reason that I wanted this to happen is because the clerk job at this point is a single point of failure. If I would get in an accident, I'd be out, I mean, there are different jobs in the city like that, but not many people know what a clerk does, actually, and it concerns me. And our city's growing, and we don't have a deputy clerk. We did have a person who was willing to sit in for me, it's happened twice, that I couldn't be here.
You said we do have, or didn't have?
We did, but that is no longer the case.
Okay.
And they were not operating officially.
Right, it was unofficial. So my concern is I'm always a planner ahead, I do not plan to be gone for any reason, but life happens. And I just want to make sure if something happens and I can't be here, that there would be somebody to sit in, because those functions have to occur. So that's the thinking.
So that person needs to be someone, again, for the term, at least appointed for your term, so that they are fully aware of what all that you do, I mean, they, they're.
The trainings, like how to work the mic, mics, or how to do.
They're fully aware of everything that you do, so that would not want to be someone that would change out maybe every two weeks, or every month, or something?
No, it would be until the end of my term.
Well, I thought the way you worded it, I mean, you could appoint him for a weekend.
You can, or she can appoint him to the end of her term.
Just for one week, just for one.
Or one night.
I intended to, I wrote it to provide maximum flexibility to the city clerk.
The point being is that, I've been working for a city clerk for over 35 years, so have a little insight there. Deputy clerks are, are not somebody you pick off the street corner, or because they're a good clerical person, so they need some training and they need some certification, and that needs to be a part of this program, when you talk about the deputy city clerk for Wanda's benefit, because they need to understand some of the confidential things and other things that they deal with, the rules and regulations of the road that you work under at this, at your job. So there is some training that's, that's warranted for that person, is my.
I would, I would say two things. One, you can get elected city clerk with no training.
You can.
Yes, as long as you're a qualified elector. And then number two, as any of them, as the mayor, or as you, or, or that has people that work for them, you know, it's up to Wanda to pick out an appropriate person that can handle the job and provide the training they need to do, whatever it is she's requesting. So I'm unfamiliar with any city going to that level of detail with something like this. I, I think typically, yes, in a city of size, I, I worked in Fayetteville, they had seven or eight, only a couple of them, I think, were designated deputy city clerks, and they would go to conferences, they, they had a little kind of a higher level of involvement, I guess you would say, and experience of that, I think that's probably getting to what you're saying. We just need someone that can take minutes and sign a, you know, sign a certification of a document or something if Wanda is unable to attend, or, and she's just trying to make sure that the whole city, because the city would stop. I'll be honest with you, it is important, the legal function she has is important.
It's critical.
It's.
Critical, you're correct. It's not important, it's critical. So, so having a, having a deputy is, is equally as critical as having a good quality clerk. She's taken an interest in it, so I just want to emphasize the fact that there is training that's going to be involved, and that person that needs to be available to be able to do that stuff, go to the training classes, et cetera.
You said that a person should be, has to be an employee of the city. Does that mean she can retain someone and then become an employee of the city, or that they already have to be?
Before they could be appointed, they would have to be an employee of the city.
So higher than their capacity, isn't it?
So that means, so you would have, she would have to get a deputy from within the current staff?
Yes.
It's kind of near protein, essentially, right?
No.
Well, they're trying to get capacity, like.
I'm not, I'm not an employee of the city.
No, but it's a capacity that like, if she's unable to fill her duties.
What, the, the entire, we have certain employees that work at the city that would be able to fill in, that, that, that could, could, that could stay late one night and fill in, or be there in the office. Again, it, I'm going to be the chief one that's going to be, I need a certified copy of this ordinance because I got to file, I need it for court, and Wanda's not here, but, you know, we've got Cassie that's a deputy, so she could put that seal on it and sign it as deputy clerk under her authority. Otherwise, no one can do that, I can't get what I need, or, you know, when things need to be filed, like you're, and sometimes you have, you all have documents you have to file with the city clerk, you're concerned about, is Wanda going to be there? Well, we can have a deputy, and you'll have the assurance that someone there with legal authority has accepted, because that person, wherever it says city clerk in the law, that deputy city clerk can do that very thing.
Then you answer my question then, so basically that person needs to be someone that is available in city hall, whenever city hall is open for business, that person needs to be.
They need to be an employee of the city. I can't say, we might not have someone, there are some laws about things like police department employees, say, operating in another department, in terms of like a deputy court clerk, which is a different example, but we want to make sure whomever is employed in the city has no impediment to being able to lawfully serve. And so that's all that's intended, and, and we want to, of course, this law stays in effect until some council in a hundred years repeals it, and you never, it's never, I'm not, Wanda's never going to do this, no one at this table, no one we would think of would do this, but you could have a situation, you could get a rogue elected official that could go out and start a point, say, oh, I've been appointed deputy city clerk, let me into that file cabinet. And we wouldn't really have much cause to be able to, you know, and so we need to make sure we know how many there can be, and that there's some control over whom that person can be, and so that's the reason for those restrictions.
I thought some city around here had kind of a conflict between the mayor and the city clerk.
That's happened.
It's happened.
It has happened.
But we all get along swimmingly here in Velvista.
Okay, so is this going to solve and address your need?
Correct, yes. I have no intention to change, I take this job, I, I, you know, I was sworn in, I take it very seriously, but I also know that if I get in a car wreck on the way to a meeting or whatever, that business needs to go on, meaning somebody who can sign papers, they don't, won't have that kind of, the files are locked, paper files, and the, and the digitalized is also, only a few people can get into that, so that's not really a concern. I wouldn't ask for that, it's presence, it's recording, it's signing.
But you have somebody that you know can fulfill this correctly?
I do currently.
Or more than one, maybe?
One person.
Only I could think of, if you myself, I mean, I used to be hall break.
Yeah, for sure.
Okay. Number F is resolution authorizing participation in the city of Velvista in benefit program four of the Arkansas Local Police and Fire Retirement System, LOPFEE, for eligible employees who are firefighters or police officers. Glenda Kilderman?
Yeah, this is, I brought this up last month, just as a discussion item, nothing has changed since I brought it up last time, we're just trying to enhance the volunteer credit for anybody who volunteers in the fire or the police department, so that they get a little better LOPFEE credit for their volunteer time. So it amounts to.
Can you explain how that's going to work, or how, how this does with the people?
If, okay, so for one thing.
Do we have, do we have some volunteers now that, that do things in the fire department without pay?
Yes.
Retired fire people, as an example?
We, we have one volunteer in the fire department, we have one volunteer in the police department. And what this does is enhances the amount of money that's credited towards their LOPFEE account as a volunteer, and very little difference to the city, we go from paying $6 per volunteer per month to $20 per volunteer per month. So we're basically funding at a little higher level.
So as a volunteer, they don't get compensated to do that work?
Right.
But this is an alternative?
In lieu of some compensation, yeah.
So it's really a benefit to the employee?
Volunteer.
Make additional years.
It's greater than the one a volunteer.
Right, yes.
So it's $20 an hour then, six, six?
No, just $20 a month.
$20 a month.
More, right now we're paying six per month, it would be 26, so 240 per person per year is all the cost is.
So we thought we'd help them out, and hardly cost us anything.
Yeah, it does cost us a lot, yeah. How many, how many volunteers do we have?
Only two.
Only two?
And we don't see that growing a lot, at least for a while.
Okay, thank you, Glenda. The last one is G, amending the city council rules of order procedure to modify the order of voting so that members are rotated per meeting rather than per vote, making clarifying changes and for other purposes. Probably, I do get the blame for this, noticing that the meetings, you know, the clerk is constantly changing the order of voting, because it's a big deal supposedly that you have to vote last, we don't, you don't want the same person voting last, so, well, we have, constantly have votes that are 6-0 and 5-1, and every once in a while we have something controversial. So I thought, why are we switching vote, you know, the order every single time we vote? Let's just have, go in one order for that whole meeting, then the next meeting, somebody else finishes, you know, every month, that way throughout the year, everybody would, twice, you know, would have it come up twice. And also, Jason put in the ordinance, this might already be the case, I'm not sure, about voting in order, first, Ward 1, position 1 votes.
That's already in the rules.
Yeah, then Ward 1, position 2, so you vote in order, and actually, so the main change is just that we go in the same order for a whole meeting, then the next meeting, you know, we'll move up one, then the next meeting.
Ward 1, position 2 would be the first one on the next time.
Yeah.
Or whatever it chooses to do.
That seems easier for her.
Yeah, great.
And you should roll the dice and maybe, you know.
It allows, theoretically, the idea that someone would always be, be stuck voting last, it could be the decision maker on everything that was close, and so it was deemed appropriate to kind of share that potential burden. This still does it, but it doesn't mean you rotate it every single time.
Well, it also is awkward to be the first one to vote.
Well, it could be, but it is, yeah.
It could be as challenging as the first is the last. So, so I think that's a good move. It, it makes some consistency for you, because then you've got the same call, you don't have to figure out who you're going to pick on first.
Okay, next thing is discussion items, updating 2025 budget, and we passed this out, and we're planning to have a budget meeting on December 5 at 3:00 P. M. I think we asked you about 2:30 P. M., but, so I don't know if everyone's, Jerry, I wasn't sure if you could make that on December 5, it's Thursday? Okay. Plus, I knew we hadn't heard back, but it was earlier today, yeah. Oh, okay.
This afternoon.
Good, okay. Just a few highlights I thought I might mention, we can delve into this right now as much as you'd like. The revenue increase on this proposed budget is 7.5%, and the expenses are up 11%. We have very few new, this wouldn't be apparent from looking at the budget, we have very few new hires, I'm showing three in fire, and fire has to either be three or zero because of the shifts, we aren't three people, we're not hiring anybody. One and a half in police, 1.8 in streets, zero in city hall, zero in the library, and so really trying to, you know, keep the expenses down. As I mentioned before, there's been a big increase in housing starts, and that creates, and of course, constant increase in our population, and creates more work for a bunch of different departments, obviously. This budget includes 3% raises, and I think some key pages on expenses are page 8 and page 8.1, because page 8 shows the expenses by department, and 8.1 shows expenses by department without salary, without salary and benefits. So you can kind of look there and see what's happening. And, and on the capital expenditures budget, it's right now, it's showing 5.6 million. So we're trying to keep those down.
We've got revenue increase of 7%, seven and a half, we've got 7.5% increase in revenue, but a 11% increase in expenses.
Right, yeah.
What is your plan, then?
So. So, good point. It's been a bit of a challenge lately. A lot of it has to do with compensation, that's what we're trying to keep the number of employees down, compensation, pension, expenses, things like that. And it's been a real challenge for us. That's one reason why we went out and got that, that one...
The bond.
Yeah, the bond.
The loan before the spread.
The spread.
The revenue bond.
Yeah. So we still have, you know, we're still working off of a reserve of about fifteen million, but it's a, it's a big challenge on the budget to break even, which is something to think about, as Doug Fowler's pointed out, something to think about for the future.
And we don't have the resources of businesses in Dallas to relate to other communities around us?
Yeah.
To anticipate growth in that tax revenue stream? That's our difficulty.
One of the things I'm starting to notice, which, when you do have increased business, which we're starting to have with some of the plans people have, the expenses tend to start before the increase. In other words, you have all these burdens of the planning department and the different departments, and the new business isn't done, the expenses come before anything's done, it's going to bring in sales tax. So our city sales tax is going up pretty significantly each year. This year in particular, we're, you know, we're up, what's it so far, six point six percent. If you look at most cities, they're not like that. We're working off a small base, but even cities in North West Arkansas, like...
We're doing better than most of them.
Yeah, if you look at the average around the state, it's way, way below that.
Well, Ben Villarosa goes down.
Yeah, and I noticed the state revenue is down again in October statewide, so...
I think, I think it's a good budget, it is what it is. I mean, you can't hardly operate without a eleven percent increase, just because of how our city government is going, employees, fire, et cetera. And I'm not talking about admin, you know, just running the government a day, I'm talking about our central resource, our central departments, right? Because we had to add personnel and everything else, and salaries are going up, benefits are going up, et cetera. I think, you know, we're heading down a road, we're going to have to make some really tough decisions here in a year or two about what we are going to fund in capital projects, capital budget, right?
Yeah.
Because we're talking about a new fire department, and I'm looking at this thing, and I'm like going, I don't know how we're going to do it, even if, even if the residents would approve a bond extension, right? Because you're going to have like twelve employees, you're going to have to add on, those aren't going to be, and then, because we got to replace police cars, we got to put, you know, the fire, the annuances, you know, that replace those, you want to keep those updated. It's almost like we're looking, we got to make sure we do those things first.
Yeah.
But, so, I guess my question is, available funds at the end of 2024, we had twelve point three million dollars, right? After our twenty-five percent revenue holdback for emergencies.
Yeah.
And our first, our first capital budget sheet that we got, we had six point four million. So we about cut that in half in one year because of capital budget outlay. But because of revenue bond, we got, what was it, we talked the other day, is it two point four million that's going to go back into...
Oh, on expenses already, yes, yeah.
So it'll be six point four and like two point four million back on the expenses that we're kind of like recouping that money that we spent, right?
Yeah.
So, you know, we're still looking pretty good, but it's going to go fast. And, you know, something we didn't talk about, we talked about the fire station, well, we need to do greater, right? We kind of came out of left field. We got one in our street department, I mean, we've got some things coming down the pipe that said we're going to...
Yeah.
Whoever's working on it is going to have to be doing some, some pretty sharp pencils and do some pretty, pretty tough arithmetic.
Creative things.
Yeah. So, and you know what, it's not, it's not because of loose spending or anything like that, it's just the environment that we're living in today, you know?
The cost of living in Northwest Arkansas.
It's just the cost of doing business is getting us.
And example is that the car wash that the street department put in for the vehicles and things, that was...
Great example, right?
More than doubled what it was four years ago.
Was a hundred seventy thousand, it ended up in five forty.
Five hundred.
And we had to do it, we did not have a choice.
Choice.
Anyway, glad we built a public safety complex.
Yep.
Fire station under three when we did, and the training center.
And we may have to, we may have to look at future capital projects as being not as much brick and mortar, but more metal and lower cost type of selections in our projects.
The question is, how do we increase the revenue? And it would certainly, commercial enterprise and commercial development would certainly help that, but have, we have, do we have any possibility of having any kind of discussion, the county, or whatever subsidiary it might be, and we might be dealing with as to what kind of plans that they might have with their future development?
They are planning to have a public, remember, they said they'd have another public meeting. They're planning to have a public meeting in early January, so that will give people insights into what they plan for Vegas one.
Did you ask if they would have one with the city council? Kind of give us a kind of an idea of what the plans are?
They could do that, they, they wouldn't, I don't, they would not do it before the public meeting, but they could do that, yeah.
The reality is, is whatever they do, it's three to five years before we see a penny of that. Whatever, I mean, it's probably closer to five by the time you really see any, any money flowing in our income stream.
They could build a casino where the...
Assuming that the local residents would vote for that.
Not without the approval of Ben County voters.
I think a casino, I think a casino where they would, a landmark supercenter in our nightly market, we plan would be a tax one.
Choice. Yeah, I don't know if that's big enough, though.
I don't think so.
Anyway, before we get too far, the weeds, you can continue to study this budget, we will be going over it December five. Appreciate your efforts and everything.
The last item is our schedule of meetings for '25 this year.
Yes, this is draft, if you could, yeah, if you could study your calendars this week, it will be in next week's, Jason is writing up a...
Yeah, we do a resolution every year to adopt the meeting calendar for the next year. So we were going to add this to a resolution to the agenda for Monday.
For November.
For this month, yes. And I didn't come up with it, but I think we made the same adjustments in terms of holiday that we normally make.
Right, I checked it through with department heads, and they've all agreed on it, but we want council to, you know, make sure these dates work on their calendars.
It's invariable that, for whatever reason, one of these or another, all of us will have a conflict somewhere along the line that's unplanned. So, it's a matter, best laid plans of my son matter.
I just wanted it in your hands a week before you vote on it.
This hasn't changed from what you set out the board, it's the same calendar as you set the board. You circulated this a month and a half ago.
Right, that was the first time around, so this is the same, I just printed it out for you to refresh your memories.
Yeah.
Jason, did an issue two, did the issue two change the requirements for casino, can any, any locale, county or city, can they both have...
My understanding, because it was quite confusing for people, especially my lawyers, it revoked the casino permit in Pope County, which has, which I assumed would, and which did create a federal lawsuit, because they had been granted a permit, it was taken away, and the state's probably going to end up having to pay something related to that, but anyway, they did that. And it made a point of saying that in the future, any casino would have to obtain, the voters consent in the county, but then again, the constitution does not authorize any additional casinos. So my thinking on that is that it would have to be a constitutional amendment to authorize another casino in another county, then that could also change this requirement everyone just voted on to say that the county voters had to approve it. So it's, I think there's still a little bit of confusion there.
As far as which would come first, the constitutional amendment or the...
Well, right, but I mean, they put this in the constitution, well, you amend the constitution, there's nothing in there that says you can't amend what you just amended to say, okay, we're going to have a casino in Tazzer County, and, and without regard to any vote or whatsoever. Then the state would vote on it as an amendment, but...
So basically, that's the amendment, or the amendment that was passed and may not be constitutional?
No, it was constitutional, they changed the constitution, the, I don't, this doesn't affect all of this or Ben County at all, but the, whenever the government provides a permit, if we permitted something and it was according to the law, and then all of a sudden, we walked in and said, permit, permit revoked, then, then that person would have a claim.
Right.
That's kind of what the voters did.
Right.
And so those developers, I think, are going to, and I have done a lot of work on that, they're going to court to try and get some money back for what they put into the project, I guess, I don't know. I think it's fair to say there aren't going to be more casinos unless there are more elections that take place first. I can say that for sure.
And it's true to your question, I'm sorry, none of that...
And I don't, I don't represent any casino developer or casino opponents.
I guess one, one thing that we need to plan for for next year?
Is not a casino.
No, is that, in talking with the local legislators, it is apparent that they will bring back the same...
Oh, yeah, on short-term rentals.
Legislation about short-term rentals, so we need to have our guns in the road, our people at the, at the orange light ready to move, not knowing how fast it's going to come. But it will be coming back, so we can...
Written the same way?
Implications are that it will be pretty much the same proposal I had before, with a few additions, but really, the one that they have is...
Well, I would say that, of course, we only operate according to how the state allows us. When it tells us we're restricted, we restrict it, otherwise we can operate the way we see fit in the area. So if they come in and say we can't do what we've done, they come in and say you got to repeal something, you got to change something, whatever, but until then...
Our education about the fire code has been very informative, and there may be some routes we can take there that are creative.
If we start getting creative with this, we're going to court, so we're just going to be ready.
That's all right.
You might, we're talking about budget, you might as well put a few thousand.
Okay, yeah, we're during, thank you.